Thank you and good morning. Welcome to the Growth Infrastructure Waste Committee, the 9th of 2022. Today is the 13th of October 2022. The first thing I'll do is call council attendants. It's obviously myself, the Deputy Mayor, councillor Madsen, councillor Ireland, councillor Tully, councillor Doyle, councillor Fekner and councillor Kunselman are here. I don't have anything from councillor John Eke at this stage for an apology. Has anyone heard from him? Oh, excellent. In regards to councillor Mulligan, we have a request from councillor Mulligan. His request is attendance via audio link today. So I'll move that in accordance with section 254K of the Local Government Regulations of 2012 and 862 of council's meeting procedures policy. Councillor Russell Mulligan will be permitted to participate in the meeting via audio link. Do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Kunselman. All those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. And I just want to check that councillor Mulligan, you can hear us?
Good morning, ma'am. Yes, I can hear you clearly.
Wonderful. Thank you. We'll move on now to the acknowledgment of country. An if or city council respectfully acknowledges the traditional owners as custodians of the land upon which we meet. We pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging, as the keepers of the traditions, cultures and stories of a proud people. We move on to any declarations of interest on matters in the agenda. There being none, I'll move on to business outstanding. There are none. Confirmation of the minutes. I have one addition, which I did let the secretary know. One thing in relation to minutes from the 15th of September 22, under the Business Outstanding section for deferral of consideration of item one response to petition, the leash-free dog area kemiro recreation park, councillor John Eke's name is listed as voting for the deferral. She was obviously not at present at the time when the matter was considered. I just think it's put up there. So the item is just for the deferral that we moved it to, I think, after item 11?
Could I just clarify? That was the deferral till later in the meeting?
Yes. They've got councillor John Eke voted on that. Happy for anyone to, if you want some time to look at that. So it's not on the matter itself, it's just on the deferral.
Yeah, thank you, ma'am.
Any other recommendations or corrections? Okay, I'll move those. Do I have a second? Thank you councillor Doyle. Any discussion? Put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the room. Councillor Mulligan, how do you vote?
Affirmative. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We now move on to item two, which is a proposed, it's a development application. 17522/2021/pda, a recommendation, proposed community use for childcare centre at 7001 Grampian Drive, Deeping Heights. This is a report concerning a development application seeking an MCU for a childcare centre in Deeping Heights. May I ask for the relevant council officer to come to the lectern, please?
Good morning, Mary councillors. Anthony Bowles, Equity Development Planning Manager.
Thank you, Mr Bowles. May you outline why this matter is coming to council?
This application has been referred to council to make a decision on the basis of the number of submissions received on the application. We received 163 submissions relating to cultural heritage matters on the site. More specifically, the suspected human remains on the site and an investigation carried out by the Queensland Police Service regarding those remains. So all submissions, I believe, were in relation to that matter.
Okay. So obviously, there's a discussion in the paper on the Indigenous cultural values. Do you mind going into the claim about the bones?
Yes. So into the report, there is a summary of a conversation that council officers have with officers from QPS. Essentially, what occurred was there was some bones found on the site. There was an allegation that they were human bones, human remains. There was an investigation or a study carried out by a professor of Griffith University. But following that, there was a more in-depth investigation by Queensland Police. Anthropological investigation of the bones, which was then referred to police in New South Wales. Another similarly qualified forensic anthropologist to carry out a peer review of the investigation. Having carried out the investigation and then the review, the police were satisfied that the bones were not of human origin and the case was essentially closed. So there is still some discussion around those things. We don't have a copy of the report. However, that conversation has occurred and the findings of those reports have been shared with the YEP group as well.
Okay. And do you know what the YEP response was to that report?
I don't know personally. No. Our communication with YEP on that matter is limited. Whilst it occurred on the site and it is something we referred to in the application, it isn't part of our assessment of the application, which is something that was carried out by the state government.
So can you outline what parts the state assess and what parts council assess so we know today what we're assessing?
It's probably easier just to differentiate the state government parts. So applications in the PDA are referred to Economic Development Queensland for a state interest review. The majority of state interests relate to things like state-controlled roads, education facilities and other community facilities like police stations and things like that, as well as koala vegetation. But state heritage matters is one of those state interests. The site is nearby a state heritage site, being the Deeping Creek Mission Cemetery site, but it isn't on that site. It's about 750 metres away from that Deeping Creek Mission site. There was quite a lot of work done by the state in the previous approval, which is the subdivision approval, which is actually closer to the Deeping Creek Mission site. And that the cultural heritage and the state heritage site were assessed under that application. And there are quite a lot of requirements for the applicant to complete to carry that development, including a cultural heritage management plan. The cultural heritage management plan is the main tool the state uses to ensure compliance with the Act, essentially, the Heritage Act. And what that includes is a conversation with the native title claimants or applicants, in this case, the YEP, and they develop a plan. That plan has been endorsed. It is confidential though, so we do not have access to that. So as a matter of state interest, the state heritage is managed by EDQ. They provided us a list of conditions, which are detailed in the report, under the Indigenous Cultural Values section, which was applied to the subdivision approval. Now, this application was also referred to EDQ. However, they required no additional information with respect to Indigenous cultural values because it was carried out under the previous approval. What we've done is included a condition that requires those prior conditions under the prior approval to be carried out with this approval. So sort of to ensure that those things are carried out before this development occurs.
Okay. So what you're telling me is the fact that the cultural heritage issues are managed by the state government?
That's correct.
Not council, okay. And the state government have an agreement with YUP?
The cultural heritage management plan, I believe, is signed between the AB Jennings and the YEP, but the requirement for that is applied by EDQ, the state.
And is that YUP agreement, do they agree with this development?
I do not know that. I have not had that conversation. They have the conversation with AB Jennings and they come to agreement with AB Jennings on the management plan. The fact that they've endorsed the management plan suggests that they have some understanding that their concerns about the site have been addressed through that management plan. There are other requirements that they'll have to meet to probably completely ensure that they're satisfied, including some important work with respect to the, sorry, let's get to the conditions. So the geophysical survey of the site, particularly around the cemetery site, and then the compliance assessment for an archaeological management plan. So those things will need to be submitted. So I would say, once all those conditions have been completed, in consultation with the YEP, that they would have satisfied those concerns.
And I note in the report says that the proposed childcare centre is 750 metres from that site.
That's right. It's basically in the diagonal corner opposite of it.
So do you want us to have any questions? Yes, councillor Ireland?
Mr Bowles, I just want to understand. So there's been a subdivision approved. So why wasn't all of the geophysical survey done of the parent lot at that time? I don't understand why we're doing...
The simple question is that they haven't carried out the subdivision approval yet. So in a sequence of events, this approval essentially would be one of the later approvals that are to be carried out. So the original subdivision goes back to 2008. It's been around for quite a long time. There was the subsequent one in 2018. They haven't carried that out. So to carry that out, there would be the requirement to do all these conditions and then that creates lots. And that creates a lot of this childcare centre goes on finally after that. So that would be up to the developer to decide which process they want to carry out first or which approval they want to carry out first. But they need to do a bit of work before they can actually take up this approval. So this is likely to sit for a little while while they complete all these other requirements and actually carry out the subdivision.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, councillor Kunselman?
Thank you, Mr Bowles. I note there are 163 submissions. Were they all about cultural heritage?
I believe so.
Yeah, okay.
Mike? Yep.
And there were no other objections, like need or?
No, not in this area. If need did come up, we have looked into that. This area is growing rapidly. Reports indicate that a new childcare centre would be required in Ripley about once a year to keep up with the growing population. So it isn't like some other areas in Ipswich which are growing at a slower rate. This is growing extremely quickly. So the need for childcare centres is live. It's real.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Doyle.
Sorry, Mr Bowles. I just want to clarify. The submissions were 170 approximately. Is it correct to assume that they're not all part of the YUP group? And just wondering if we have awareness. So you've confirmed that the forensic anthropology report was provided to YUP? I'm just, you know, wondering if those that made submissions with concerns around cultural heritage will be given a copy of that report?
The submitters come from a wide range of locations and organisations. If you have a look at the draft decision notes, you can actually see the whole list. So it's a mix of people. The report, I'm not certain that it has been released. It is a fairly confidential police document, essentially evidence in their investigation. I think it would be necessary to carry out an RTI, at the very least, to obtain that information. So for them to have closure on that point, it would be a conversation with the QPS rather than with council because it won't be submitted to council as part of this application, for example.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Mr Bowles, on page 55, under 10 Cultural Heritage.
I think my page numbers are a little bit different to yours.
Attachment one, table 10, Cultural Heritage.
Yes.
It says, unless already actioned by others, the applicant must submit to the MEDQ delegate certificate. Can you explain what an MEDQ?
The MEDQ delegate is Ipswich City Council.
Yep. Certified by a suitably qualified professional demonstrating compliance with conditions 1 through to 6 as relevant of the EDQ, it's the Department of State Development Tourism Innovation and State Interest Review responded on the 15th of June 2020 relating to the development approval. Does that mean that the state have given approval for it based on cultural heritage?
So that condition is what ties it to the prior approval here. Yes. So they've given approval and conditions for the subdivision approval and what this condition is drawing them into this one.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr Bowles.
Thank you.
The recommendation before us is that council approved development application number 17522/2021/pda, being the material change of use for a community use childcare centre, subject to conditions as contained in attachment one of this report. I will move this. Do I have a second for this? Thank you, councillor Doyle. Any discussion? Yes, councillor Tully?
Thanks, ma'am. There's just one item in the report which causes a little bit of concern to me and it's on page, well, the actual page numbers aren't numbered. This is on our agenda, page 32 of 155. It talks about the alleged massacre. I think there is much, if not substantial, evidence to suggest that the massacre did take place. This is not in the recommendation, of course. It was just the officer's wording. But I think it might have been better to either identify it as a massacre or a reported massacre rather than alleged massacre, which diminishes how people might identify the truth of what actually happened in the past. Having said that, this is an example of First Nations people being concerned about the proposed development. Sometimes, my view is that town plans shouldn't just be black letter documents, that they should be living documents to take into account social and community issues, which have been raised in good faith in a substantial manner. And I certainly have concerns about the appropriateness of this development. It's a very vexed issue out there. We know that. That's gone on for over a decade in one shape or another. But on this occasion, I feel compelled to stand with the First Nations people in relation to the significant opposition to this particular development.
Councillor Tully, the fact that it's not at the site of the massacre, it's further away, does that have any influence?
Well, there's a lot of concern about some of these evidentiary issues. For example, in relation to the bones, I'm told that the police report was conducted in under four hours and only on the basis of photographs. So just looking at this as a totality in relation to the concerns that people have, you know, I've come to the conclusion in a very difficult situation that should not be supported.
Okay. I might ask Mr Bowles to come back to ask about the evidentiary stuff. I'm not aware of that. I took it that the QPS have done a forensic analysis. That's what they've done. May I ask Mr Bowles to come back to the lectern?
Anthony Bowles, Equity Development Planning Manager.
Would you be able to explain some of the details of the forensic, I understand from councillor Tully, he said that there was a full hour. I guess, do we know much about the analysis that was done?
Unfortunately, I don't have those details. I'd have to take that question on notice. We've put as much detail as we have available to us in the report. Those details may be true. Unfortunately, I can't confirm or deny those reports. All I can say is that there was an initial assessment by the Queensland Police and then a peer review by the New South Wales Police. So...
And their findings were?
Well, they agreed with each other, essentially.
That they're not human remains?
That's what I understand, yes. While I'm up here, I might make a point. And taking on board councillor Tully's views, I completely understand that. I do need to just highlight, if the council is minded, to take a different view from the recommendation. It is a little bit different in the PDA to the rest of the Ipswich council area. It is impossible for the council to make a decision to refuse the application right away. The PDA delegation requires us to advise the minister if we were to make a decision along lines of refusal and await directions. So just be mindful of that. To make a different recommendation, it wouldn't be enough to say we recommend to refuse it. It'd have to be something along the lines of consult with the MEDQ about that.
If this council decides to refuse it?
That's right.
The next step would be to inform the minister and?
And await direction, yes.
And wait his direction?
Yes. So it's just a complication of the PDA that needs to be considered. Otherwise, you know, if you made that decision, it wouldn't necessarily stand straight away. You'd have to do some other steps.
Right. Okay. Well, I understand, but this development is not on the massacre site. It's a...
Well, I suppose that's the point that's been raised, is there's been an investigation.
Is there contention that this childcare centre is part of that massacre site?
I think that's what the contention is. I think there's contention that there is potential other sites or other bones to be investigated over the entire site. And that's, I think, one of the causes of concern. But what the QPS investigation related to a specific area of the site, and this is near that. A lot of the important cultural heritage investigations have been in the state heritage site, which is the opposite end, which is actually the cemetery. So if there is concern about other potential massacre sites to be investigated, this is only really looked at one area.
Okay. Any other questions, Mr Bowles? Yes?
And what does the minister's direction look like? So we advise the minister and wait his direction. What are the paths that he has, or they have to take?
We've only really done, I believe, one of these before. And we sought to refuse an application that hadn't responded to information requests and had sat for a number of years. And there was support given by the minister in the form of a letter, I believe. We exchanged formal correspondence via letter. So I would imagine what we would need to do is write a letter to the minister and receive a letter back, providing direction, which is either supporting the suggested action or providing guidance otherwise. It simply hasn't happened really on a case like this yet. The first version, the first refusal we did was quite straightforward and the minister agreed with our recommendation.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, councillor John Eke?
Mr Bowles, just looking at the conditions of the DA and with the anthropology part, if it's unknown whether there is any more or if this is indeed the massacre site and something is found as part of that condition, are they privy to stop development?
Essentially, what happens then is the duty of care responsibilities under the Queensland Heritage Act come in. The Queensland Heritage Act, and it's actually one of the advice conditions, has a component which is that anyone carrying out activity on the site has a duty of care to protect artefacts, items of interest and the like when they're carrying out the development, basically stop. Yeah, so. And then carry out further activity to determine what to do with those artefacts. So if, for example, they're carrying out the development after carrying out those conditions as well and then were to find further artefacts or bones, their duty of care requirement kicks in, which is blanket, basically. It applies even without a condition, which requires further investigation. It applies even without a condition, um, which requires further investigation. Um, and, um, how long or what action happens after that will depend on what has been found.
And, and do we, who can looks at the compliance of their duty to do that?
Uh, that's, um, generally a responsibility of Datsip, so the Department of, um, Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander Partnerships. Um, so they, they are involved in, first of all, involved in the assessment of the application, but they are involved in elements of the duty of care.
Okay. And then just for clarification on page, on our page thirty-three of one fifty-five. Um, so it, it's implied, or I'm understanding from the points, that the bones are led, were handed over to the professor at Griffith University for analysis, but then QPS officers did not attend and take them, they just took photographs, is that right?
Uh, that's what I understand, yes. I don't, I'm not sure if there are other investigations undertaken as well as the photographs. That would be, um, a question I'd have to take on notice.
Okay, thank you.
If I made through your chair, so I was on a similar thought process to councillor Johnick, that the report does, uh, include the details of, uh, the advice that council officers receive from the Manto, um, police station, so further to what you're referring to there councillor Johnick, it indicates that, uh, forensic photos were taken of the bones, a large number of photos and bone fragments, and it was a comprehensive review of the forensic photos, preparation of a report that then concluded that the bone fragments are not, and bones are not human, most likely to be pig bones, and then that forensic officer's report was peer reviewed, um, as Mr Bowles referred. So.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'll open it for more discussion. I guess before we go to the vote, um, I think the community have raised, um, an issue, and I think the main issue is that, that cultural heritage, which is actually not under the responsibility of council, we actually don't get to assess about cultural heritage. Uh, and noting that if, um, this is refused, the pathway is to go to the state government, which actually does have, um, the expertise but also the legislative responsibility for cultural heritage. So I'll just indicate before we go to the vote that I won't be voting to support this, even though I moved it. So I'm, and I'll move, go to the vote, those in support of this recommendation, please raise your hand. Just so you know councillor Milligan, no hands are raised in the chamber, how do you vote?
Sorry, I, I was just, um, trying to work my microphone.
That's okay. Just so you know that we've, see he's voting in support of this motion, at the moment in the chamber, no councillor has their hand up. Do you support this?
No.
Thank you. Uh, those against? It's unanimous in the chamber, how do you vote councillor Milligan?
In the negative.
Thank you. Um, so that recommendation did not pass.
Mayor, could I just clarify the procedural, that, that, that's not a decision to, uh, refuse it, it's just simply no decision at all. I think we need to, uh, discuss, because it's still before us, um, that that would then trigger at an officer level a referral to, um, the state. Is, is that your understanding?
I'll just double check with Mr Bowles, my understanding is if we did not approve this, that it would trigger going to the state. If I could get Mr Bowles to, to see if we have to resolve something else at council? Is that your question councillor Tully?
Yeah, the, 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 the point is the difference between, um, no recommendation at all.
Yes.
Um, and whether or not that, that of itself triggers an intention to refuse, i- if that's the criterion that the, um, the current legislation require, minister's determination requires.
Uh, yeah, yes, I probably need a little bit more.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, unfortunately, um, because not, not approving it, uh, at the moment would, um, just leave the application undecided, um, and it would just float on. Um, the officer couldn't make enough, uh, assessment, but basically we get in the lip of, we, I can mark here.
So to, for the process that you're saying that would be triggered that goes to the state, what kind of, uh, recommendation would be the best one for us?
I think it would be something along lines of council, um, inform the minister of, um.
If I get your type now, okay?
Oh, okay.
Okay, thank you. Form the minister of its recommendation to refuse and await direction on the matter?
Do we need to, um, sorry?
Yeah, that's not right, you know, it's not a recommendation to refuse it, we haven't done that today.
Okay, uh, so we would like the minister to decide the application?
Well, we just, um, we said that we would not approve it.
No, we, we, there's no decision at all, we voted against the recommendation, so there is no decision made by council.
Well, we just refused it.
No, no, there was a recommendation to approve.
Yes.
And that was not carried.
Okay.
So a, as Mr Bowles says, there is no decision made by council. But I think we might be able to cover it with, if I just use these words as a suggestion, that, uh, inform the minister that the council may, may intend to refuse it, and it's now referred to him in accordance with the, um, protocol or whatever the.
Instrument of delegation.
Do we, do we need to, may intend to refuse on the basis of cultural heritage concerns? Do we, do we need to, um, call that out? I think.
I think it would be concise to do so.
So I can't hear councillor Tully?
So I think it would be, like, concise to do so, like.
It's certainly giving direction to the state that, um, it, it matters with, under their control, that.
Particularly when they have information that we don't, that we're not privy to.
Could I, sorry, it just suggests that we perhaps defer how we handle this till the end of the meeting, so just to give us, uh, otherwise trying to wordsmith this in, um, you know, a couple of minutes, uh, might not.
Well, how about we, we leave that the council, um, inform the minister? And, and I guess we could, how it's wordsmithed to the minister is, is done later, but we, we will be writing to the minister.
I'll second councillor Tully's suggestion that we defer it till the end and give everyone a bit of a chance to put their words together, if that's all right with everyone else.
Okay, so that's, that's what you're moving, that you'd like to defer this to after item five?
Could I just make a comment before we do that? And it is related, um, um, I've got faith in the, what the QPS have prepared, but I see no reason why that shouldn't be made public. So I'd like to suggest that we also move a secondary recommendation, writing to the relevant minister to request that that report be made public. I understand that it's sensitive, um, this is about as sensitive as it gets, but, um, I think it's in the public interest that people can review that.
Hmm.
And I find it a bit annoying that we weren't able to review it as part of, um, this morning's deliberations.
And it was something, I was in Queensland Parliament yesterday with a comsec delegation and, and this sort of, this, the, the agreements that, um, that the state have with the different, uh, traditional owner groups are confidential. And there was a discussion about how great it would be for those to be opened, so it would give, I think, the community greater confidence if those agreements were, were not confidential. So I, I'm getting, I've got two things here, I've got emotionally, but also, uh, councillor, you want to defer till after item six, is that what you're thinking of?
Just before we do that, if I could just ask, Mr Bowles, your words earlier were that if the council, um, that the trigger for referral to the minister was the intention of the council to refuse. Not, not just an open-ended, uh, right to refer.
Yeah, uh, it, it needs to be, I'm, I'm actually just opening up the delegation now and just to help this conversation. Um, so I can just read you the words as it says.
That's okay.
Um, if you'd just give me a minute. Okay, so, um, the relevant part of the act is chapter three, part four, division three. Um, the, the nature of the function or the power that has been delegated to us is MEDQ's functions and powers in respect to D, uh, PDA development applications. Um, after a few points, um, for a refusal, the delegate must, if the delegate is considering refusing a PDA development application or considering approving only part of a PDA development application, apply, um, notify EDQ in writing before any final refusal decision is made and comply with any further directions from MEDQ. So that's, that's from the delegation itself.
So if we could paraphrase that, that council inform the minister of our intent to refuse? It's considering refusal?
Yep.
We might be able to wrap this up now, actually, with that simplicity. The, 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 the council, um, is, is considering, um, a refusal and, um.
And we notify you of?
Notify the EDQ.
As per the?
In accordance with.
The instrument of delegation direction.
Delegation, yeah. I, I, I'm happy to move it.
Refusal of application under the, was it instrument delegation?
Uh, instrument of delegation and direction.
It's, if, if, if it's a refusal for application, blah, 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 under?
Inform them to council.
And, yeah, inform the, um, MEDQ.
Do we not, do we not mention the grounds upon which we actually refuse on?
The MEDQ.
I think it's, sorry, sorry, Chair, I'm just questioning again, I think it's important to include, um, our, our grounds.
I, I think so, I thought I'd get the, that bit first and then, if that's okay. Maybe this is, there's A, B and C, maybe the B is on the, on what grounds and then C is the, um, the, um, QPS report. Okay. I, I'm happy to take a little bit of time just to get this right, if that's okay, rather than bouncing backwards and forth. So Anthony, is that the council for the minister, that council is considering refusal for application and inform MEDQ and await direction on the matter, is that?
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
Okay, um, that the, I guess councillor Doyle, the, the wording that you'd like there in regards to that it's the considering refusal based on cultural heritage or what, is, what wording would you like?
Just on cultural heritage, that's the, that's. Refusing the application.
I'll put it on the basis of August.
I know that the council is considering refusal of the application on the basis of cultural heritage issues, issues, sorry.
And then C, uh, the deputy may's.
Again, just, sorry, the relevant, um, QPS report in relation to the application.
Report, so after, uh, the relevant QPS report to the application?
In relation to the application.
Uh, I might just suggest maybe in relation to the investigation, um, I don't know if they, the investigation was necessarily tied directly to the application, I would, but it did occur around about the time.
In relation to the investigation, be my. Um, can I just check that B sounds?
That, that's fine, I mean, we can, that's a decision of the council, we'll include that in the letter.
Yeah, I'm just making sure that the, any syntax, any wording?
Yeah, no, that's okay.
Okay. So, uh, so I guess.
Sorry, I'm just, I'm just concerned C is a little too vague, I think it needs to be tied to, so if we're not tying it to, uh, the app, sorry, um, we're, we're talking about the subject property.
Um, in no ways defending it, I just put it up there so we had a good starting point, um, but I thought it was, um, since it's likely going to be, it's likely going to be moved with A and B, so when the, um, letter is prepared, it would include all that information, would be my assessment. But again, I'm happy with whatever words, I'm very open.
Investigation in relation to the property, the subject of application number, I think.
In relation to the property?
Investigation of the property, the subject of application number.
So as, as the original mover, I'm happy with that recommendation, A, B and C, councillor Doyle? Yep, I'll just after then we'll. Okay.
Sorry, oh, sorry Chair, um.
Before you go, just a case.
Of the property, yes, that's done now, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr Bowles, appreciate that. So the new, um, motions before us, the recommendations A, B and C, as you can see on the screen, and I thank you very much for working together on that. Any other discussion? Uh, I just wanted to check that councillor Milligan can, can see the screen?
Yes, mayor, I can, thank you.
Wonderful, so you can see A, B and C?
Yes, I can.
Wonderful, okay. I put, uh, recommendations A, B and C to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the chamber, uh, councillor Milligan, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you very much, it's unanimous and carried, thank you. Uh, the next item on the agenda is item three, the Waste and Circular Economy Transformation Directive Update Eight. May I have the relevant council officer come to the lectern, please?
Good morning, Brett Davie, manager of city design.
Thank you, Mr Davie, thank you very much for this, uh, report. Um, would you mind outlining a couple of the highlights of things that have progressed?
Of course. Uh, so for this most recent period, um, I've been quite, uh, focused on the new planning scheme, so that's one, um, body of work that's been a focus. Um, the other things of note for the committee, I think, are the, um, Cleanaway CRG. There is a brief note in the report about that, but Cleanaway, um, community reference groups have commenced meeting and I had another meeting last night, so I've been attending as an observer on council's behalf. Um, just as a reflection on that, the, um, community members that are attending that are quite engaged and enthusiastic about understanding the site and being involved in, um, influencing the communications outward from Cleanaway, but also in really quizzing Cleanaway on what's going on onsite, um, and how they are resolving the issues that are being experienced by the community. So that's one highlight. Uh, we've had joint task force, uh, follow-up meetings this year.
While you're discussing Cleanaway, um, have Cleanaway also talked about the fact that they've got a, the, the suing council and wanting to expand their?
Yeah, that's been made.
They've talked about the fact that they've taken us to court and to expand their landfill.
Yeah, there was, uh, a conversation, not last night, but in the previous meeting in September, where, um, the conversation by the community, or questions by the community go towards, well, are you expanding? Uh, and Cleanaway were quite open about the fact that they have sought to expand and there isn't peer on foot.
Thank you.
Uh, we've had, uh, joint task force meetings continuing with the, the Queensland government. Uh, the most recent meetings, uh, have focused on some reflection as well, given the length of time since the joint task force has commenced. Uh, and as a follow-up to that, there is a, a working group, um, made up of senior state government and council staff to talk through how that, uh, task force has been functioning and the next six months of focus. So what, what can we particularly focus on moving forward? Um, obviously I mentioned the planning scheme is a, a key program of work, so just as a general update on the planning scheme, we've provided a draft copy of the planning scheme to the Queensland government for their, uh, the consent of their state interest review. Um, that was in response to the previous resolution of council to do so. That has included a waste policy amongst many other things. We are currently working with the state on their review of all of those policy pieces. Uh, and finally, um, the, there's a state government relationship matters and two aspects there. One is the continuing coordination with the, the relevant compliance arms of both council and the Department of Environment and Science. And, um, we did have a previous council, um, matter on the potential formation of an independent EPA. So I've continued some dialogue with the state government, um, on our submission and explaining the basis of our submission to staff. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, I'll open up for any other questions from councillors? No, thank you very much, Mr Davie.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. I'll move that the report be received and contents noted. Thank you, um, thank you councillor Doyle for seconding that. Any discussion? Oh, for me, I just want to thank the state government for continuing the work with the, uh, the joint waste task force. Um, I think it's, um, it's, um, I think we'll get great benefits for our community as well, so it's good to see that that's been progressing as well. I'll put the note to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you, it's unanimous in the chamber, councillor Milligan, how do you vote?
Affirmative, thank you.
Thank you, it's unanimous and carried. We've got item four, which is the exercise of delegation report. Would anyone like to ask the relevant council offices any questions on that? No, in that case I'll move that the report be received and contents noted. Do I have a? a second for that, thank you councillor Fekner? Any discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand, it's unanimous in the chamber, how do you vote, uh councillor Milligan?
Affirmative, thank you.
Thank you, it's unanimous and carried. We move to item five, which is the Planning Environment Court Action Status Report, may I have the relevant council officer come to the. I'll note that you're looking to second that councillor Tully.
Good morning, Anthony Bowles, acting development planning manager.
How's our court case going with the uh Clean Away B M R land track?
Uh unfortunately, we do not have a um a judgment after the hearing, um we'll unfortunately have to wait a while longer, um but with respect to the JER, the joint expert, sorry, the um, sorry, the judicial review, the other type of JER, uh the hearing occurred recently, um over three days, uh it was extended, um there was not enough time for all submissions to be made, the um the final submission by the state government carried on till the 10th. Um unfortunately, I don't have the transcript of that hearing, um and I wasn't able to make it that day, so I can't report too much on that, but the hearing has concluded and we'll be in a similar position with the the waste appeals, we'll be awaiting the judgment of that um in in some time to come.
So that hearing was um, what, the 28th, 39th, the 30th of September?
That's right.
And it went to more, more time?
It, there wasn't more time needed, yes, um so there were 14 barristers involved in the submissions from all parties, um in the the very large Banco Court and the Supreme Court, so it was, it was a big day, big three days.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions of Mr Bowles? No, thank you very much for your response. I'll move the Planning Environment Court Action Status Report, and I have a second, I think councillor Tully, any discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand, it's unanimous in the chamber, councillor Milligan, how do you vote?
Affirmative, thank you.
Thank you very much, unanimous and carried. We move to item six, which is the Infrastructure and Environment Department Capital Delivery Report, may I have the relevant council officer to the lectern, please?
Good morning, Graham Martin, manager capital delivery.
Thank you, thank you very much for this um uh report and and great progress by by the organisation as well. Um would you like to highlight anything in particular that the organisation's done quite well, and also some challenges as well?
Uh I think some of the items are going um quite well, and some of these don't appear in the report because they're not a financial deliverable, but I think the, the team across the, the team with um the capital delivery team through the procurement and also with the help of some of the land acquisition people as well, we're progressing the early milestones um for delivery over the full capital year very well, and that's something that within the team and within um our department, we're working across the branches to make sure that the early milestones are met, so that we can achieve the um deliverables on the financial basis, and that's why at this stage, after the first quarter, we're on track to, well, we're on track, we're meeting budget at this stage, it's a big uphill curve from here, as was to be expected, and there's a fair bit of work involved to get some of these projects off the ground in the first place, um but to be at the end of the first quarter on or about budget is um very pleasing result across the board.
Thank you, and any challenges?
Yeah, the challenges, I think, are the things that we're seeing across um every industry and across the org- uh all organisations, you know, it's a sort of a throwaway line we're using at the moment, is that, you know, it's nearly impossible to find a barista to make a cup of coffee, to go out and build some of the infrastructure that we're looking to build is just as tough, um so we haven't hit those roadblocks, figuratively speaking, just yet, um but we know they're going to come, we just don't know which project and at what stage it's going to hit us. Um the guys, uh not the guys, the, the team are working really well, they're working with some of our suppliers to order materials in advance and stockpile them on council sites um to eliminate two risks, one, the major risk is the timeline delay, but also to try and eliminate any cost escalation delay, so we're doing that with um reinforced concrete pipes and other concrete products, we're doing it with some of the gravel supplies and some of the supplies locally are um really under pressure now to deliver, so we're getting stockpiles in advance, so our crews can pick those up, and also some of the smaller, more boutique items, some of the geotechnical reinforcing materials and some of the um underground aggie pipes and that sort of thing, we're ordering in advance and stockpiling um to make sure that we can minimise those impacts when they do hit us.
Yep. Thank you, and also note, um thank you for the, the, always like the pictorial part of the report as well, um and thank you very much for um um noting some of the defects by contractors and and getting those fixed, it's really important when that happens, that rate payers demand that the job gets done properly.
And again, I think part of, you know, we asked some of the highlights, there's some of the things that are happening behind the scenes, is that encouragement and support for the team, that we're not perfect, things will and do go wrong, and we need to report the good, the bad and the ugly accordingly, and just give everyone a, a fair view of how we're travelling.
Wonderful, thank you very much, any other questions of Mr, yes councillor Doyle?
Um thank you, Mr Martin, I'm just with the announcement by the Bureau of Meteorology, um you know, with a lot of rain headed our way probably during November, is is your team preparing for that?
Yes, we are hoping for the best and preparing for the worst.
And what does preparing for the worst look like?
Uh making sure that the projects that we're commencing are not those projects that would have major impacts and let's say washed away in severe rain, so making sure that anything that's in involved in and around waterways, bridges and culverts, they're either fast-tracking them now to make sure they're in a safe state come towards November and December, or deferring them until after that Christmas break to have an understanding of what sort of impact that will have on us. Yeah, so it's putting a bit of a risk profile against them, nothing at this stage we've had to stop or can because of the the risk, but it's certainly making sure that we're all pretty heightened on what those reports are coming through, uh and making some assessments, probably while we're in October, over the next couple of weeks, and by the end of October, we'll really have to make some judgment calls about a couple of projects that we may, what we planned for this calendar year, to be deferred to the new calendar year, which will then have some knock-on effects, um we're not quite ready to pull that trigger just yet, but yeah, certainly they're something that we're looking at.
Fantastic, thank you.
Thank you, smart, any other que- councillor Ireland?
May I ask um when the uh used centre at Red Bay Plains Reserve might get a, a start?
We are working with the contractor and we're still on target to have it open before Christmas, uh so the um contractor has asked and we've given permission for them to work Saturdays at this stage, um to try and get ahead of the program and make the most of the weather as good as it is at the moment, so I won't even say fingers crossed, but at this stage, it's all on track to be opened, let's say mid, mid-December, in time for school holidays and be open in time for the the holidays.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you councillor Tully.
Sorry, one more question, um just in relation to the drainage rehabilitation, um and I know you were saying about the timing and and the risk inflammation, implications because of the rain, forecasted rain, is there anything that's at risk of not getting rehab that could possibly have an impact if we were to get a large rain event?
I'm confident in saying no, and that's on the basis that there's nothing that we're working on at the moment that was at failure stage now, so the rehabilitations are part of that planned maintenance upgrades or improvements, so no, if we, you know, I guess there's nothing that failed and has put it at, at greater risk than what we experienced over the last 12 months, so it's, it's not, it's not where you want to be, but it's not at broken stage.
Okay, thank you, Mr Martin, thank you.
Any other questions? No, thank you, Mr Martin, appreciate that.
Thank you.
So I'll move the Infrastructure and Environment Department Capital Delivery Report, do I have a second for that, thank you councillor Ireland? I'll move into discussion. I think I just note that um the drainage rehabilitation program, there are 18 programs on there that look to be on track, which is very important, I think with the the storm season, that drainage rehabilitation is done, delighted to see that Water's Road at Calvert is is now completed, it was an unmaintained road, is now on our books there, and I do know that it it did go to budget due to the rain, and it's, I think you for the picture that it show that it was um submerged, but I know that the residents are very, very happy with it, I don't know if you, but you councillor and councillor Madison, but I've had fantastic uh response from, from residents on it, and it's great to see the the SGA works progressing so well as well. If there's no other comment, I'll move to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you, it's uh unanimous in the chamber, um councillor Milligan, how do you vote?
Affirmative, thank you.
Affirmative, thank you, it's unanimous and carried, um I have no notices of motion, uh no matters arising, uh no procedural motions or formal matters, so I'll uh end this meeting at nine fifty-four. And also the next one starts in 10 minutes' time, thank you.